Officially call the June 12, 2019 work session to order. Let the ministry reflect that Mr. Moore is absent this evening and will not be joining us. We have the minutes of May 22 before us and would entertain a motion of those minutes. I move the seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you, Lisa, as always. Monthly reports, as of today, all monthly reports are in and the board should have those in their electronic boxes for your reading, enjoyment, and overview. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have a number of guests. We have our first guest. This is a streamlined approval for facial and foot spot at 1801 Penfield Road. Mr. Costello, if you would tee that up for the board.
I would be happy to. This is Lisa Scala.
Hi.
Lisa is the other part of the Lisa Megan operation over at 1801 Penfield Road. Lisa is coming in. She'd like to get a sign on the pre-standing sign as well and like to memorialize her use of that area for a foot and facial operation. With that, I'll let you talk a little bit about the business and who's working there and hours of operation, that type of thing.
So it's by appointment only. I'm there Monday through Saturday accepting appointments. And it's the whole space in the back of the house is only about 800 square feet. I have two rooms. One room is 80 square feet, the other one's 96 square feet, and then we share a common reception area. And yeah, we're just looking to get signage out front so people know where we are.
Right. So it'd be two businesses in the back, but nothing in the front.
Retired, yeah. Nothing's there.
Lisa also just indicated that the wig's operation will be leaving soon too, which is kind of a little bit of a relief because as you've noted when I sent you the material, it takes up the remainder of the signage, which is going to be the area, obviously. It's a large area. Mr. Warner, he ran for length, so that'll be a little bit of a help in terms of getting her sign in place and in order. And I think Mr. Warner's running a, going on a business sale of some type on the 15th.
This weekend.
So he's kind of held them up on the signage until he can get his stuff out and then they'll go in and get their permits for their sign and get going on that.
So there'll be two, your operation and then the one we discussed two weeks ago. And then is it safe to say that the rest of the building will be consumed by just one other person?
I don't know at this point in time.
So the only reason I mention, the only reason I ask is that the sign, square footage is a sign, square footage. And I'd hate to have you have to make that sign multiple times. So if there were two other entities that came in there, the four of you would have to share that sign. So I'm just putting that out there so that everybody's going in with both eyes open and understand and then we're not sitting across the table down the road saying, oh, we need a bigger sign or we need more signage.
It appears that the wig sign though is taking up half of that signage.
It is.
So if they were to buy that so that it was the equal size of the other two, you'd be able to, your four units on that site can still comply.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Do you know if they're marketing it though? I mean like...
He hasn't yet, I don't think. I think he wants to get everything out first and then he's going to go ahead and do it. I talked to him last week and he seemed to be intent on just getting everything out and then moving forward. He's kind of held them up for being able to get their signs up until he got his stuff out, so.
Are you the only employee? I'm the only employee.
Any intent on having any future employees?
I don't know. Not in the meantime, yeah.
I think this meets the standards of, looking for a streamlined approval. I think it meets the standards for streamlined approval.
Yeah. I'd make a motion that we approve the request.
I will second that.
Okay. We moved and seconded. Further discussion by the board? From the applicant, any additional questions, comments, information you'd like to provide us?
No, that's it.
All right. Staff, any additional comments, thoughts that we have not discussed that should be on the table?
Just to let you know that we did the same thing with Megan. We'll be sending her an approval letter, which is basically your permit. Lisa will be sending you a bill for $100 as well. It's a one-time fee. You won't have to pay it ever again. You'll have to pay it for this one time. And then you'd be outside, you gotta get your sign permit, so you should work with the building department to get that squared away.
Okay.
You're sending the, I know you've given me your sign, but you haven't given me the size. Give me that, I'll send that out to the building inspectors and let them start the process for your sign permit.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Costello. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for coming in. Have a great evening.
You too.
All right. We'll move on to our second item, requesting a home harmless agreement for a shed at 19 Naples Circle. Mr. Valentine?
Not received the materials we were waiting for and I don't see him here this evening, so I would recommend moving on to the next application.
We'll show that as no show and withdrawn. And if he comes back at a later date, then we'll put it on a future, potentially a future agenda. We have the next item, which is requesting a whole harmless agreement for a fence at 18 Summit Crest Circle. It looks like we have, I'm going to make an assumption it's Rebecca and Ed.
Yes.
All right, welcome. So, Mr. Valentine?
Yep. It's been emailing back and forth with them about it. Obviously, I'm just getting the letter around to you now. They're looking to install a pool and obviously the required fencing that goes around that. We do have a storm sur easement that goes down the property line between them and your neighbor. Have shared with them and they understand if the fence is granted by the board, it'd be within easement. It's, you know, their cost and requirement. You know, if we need to remove the fence to repair the pipe, get access to it, we would remove the fence and it'd be at their cost to replace that. They're understanding. How bad, I've talked to them about, a little bit about the process, you know, the agreement that goes through with that. I don't know if you guys have anything else you want to share with the board or any...
Mark, is there anything out of your ordinary with this one?
No, I mean, there was nothing that...
Through a letter and...
PRC had, you know, any specific concern about. You know, we always share with them, you know, be careful, obviously calling for stakeouts. Be careful digging around wherever the pipe is. We need to hand dig near it so you don't end up...
The town can mark it.
Perfect.
The fence guy mentioned too that around that he would hand dig it.
Yeah. We just make sure they don't end up hitting the pipe or, you know, damaging the pipe right off the bat, so.
Well, I think they should enjoy their pool as soon as possible, so I'll make a motion that we grant the request for the whole harmless agreement for the fence.
I'll second.
Okay. We moved and seconded. I'll ask the board, any additional questions or comments for the applicants? From the homeowners, any additional comments or questions for the town?
No. Thank you.
And then I'd ask staff, any additional input that should be added to the record that we already have added into the record?
I'll just follow up with them for the, the board has the required resolution and then bring your agenda for next week and then the substance went, whole harmless agreement signed and then the filing fee that goes along with that.
Yep. All right. Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you get it in soon enough, we've got like six days of rank on the board.
I'll fill it for you. We'll all be over.
Yeah. Part of the permit is a part of the fee.
Very good. Thank you very much. We'll move from guests to action items. This is for a final review of garage design landscaping plan at 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard. Mr. Costello?
You could pass these around. I gotta take one and pass one.
I would be happy to.
Appreciate you, Pat.
Thank you.
The last time we met, there were three outstanding issues regarding the application of 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard related to the improvements to the residence and the property. The first one was the garage design in detail. The second was the fencing and the third was landscaping. So I want to go through each one individually and kind of give you some background as to where we are. The board tabled those issues pending review by the historic preservation board and also the planning board because they still have site plan review in place until this is resolved. The historic preservation board actually took, you're just looking at renderings that Mary had proposed to the board. There were some other ones the board did not like and I'm going to go through each of them. The board ended up looking at the design, particularly the larger building. The smaller one that you see on the front page, that kind of replaces the existing, or what was the existing garage, which is this, if you want to look at that and pack it around. Probably remember it, there wasn't much to it. The board ended up liking the design of this garage in the sense that, number one, it's an all-white garage. There's no treatment to it like stone work or anything of that nature. They liked the door detail and they liked the idea that she was putting doors in the back of the garage for personal entrance into these areas.
That's good.
So that's what they were recommending. When they looked at the larger garage, they actually were looking at alternative designs and Mira was looking for a period of time and even going through and putting on gables. She had two gables on it to kind of break it up, but after she looked at it and looked at the design, she didn't like it. She didn't think it was going to add to the building and she also thought it was going to go to look more like a Greek revival design, which is totally in conflict with the Italian style of the building. So she decided that wasn't appropriate. She did like the idea of mimicking the smaller garage, the three garage, making it look just like that except it's longer. There will be windows, as you can see. They took off the details regarding the different color schemes in the garage. It's going to be all white.
So this thing in the middle here...
It's all going to be the same thing. It's all going to be white.
Makes sense.
There are windows that are going to be placed on the side of the building and then she's got the window up in the peak area there facing the street.
Oh, it's nice.
There will be windows in each one in the back to provide some sunlight into the area. There are some plantings that they're going to put along. If you look at the site plan, on the front of the large garage, they're going to put in something called black lace elderberry, which is basically this. They will be planted along to kind of break up the building and the street. So that's what the board recommended to you.
Is there a door for each one?
There is a door for each one, yes. There's going to be a window for each one in the back. There's a door, the only door that they'll have will be the door that comes up for the car.
Oh, so there is not a separate door?
There will be on the smaller ones, yes.
On the smaller ones, but not on the...
Not on the larger ones.
Okay.
Because that faces out towards the former Mary Carriola site and I don't think they were looking for people to be able to access that side of the building.
Right.
So that's kind of where the board is with respect to the garages.
So there'll be a window in the back, but not a door?
Right. And you know, it will be locked and it's really just for sunlight. She wants to keep sunlight in there so that if it's getting to dusk, people still have enough light coming into their building so they can get out safely and kind of walk into the home.
And then the windows break it up too.
Right. And that was the other thing. They just didn't want a wall, a blank wall all the way along the back. So they are putting windows in at each one of them. And you can actually see that in their design. If you want to see that in the back, they do show the windows on each one of these units, so.
And then can we talk about the landscaping slash fence in the back?
Yes, those are the last two issues.
Okay.
So this is kind of interesting. If you, I'm going to pass these out, you know.
This relates to the...
This is the garage packet, right?
Yep. This.
Yes, that was a garage packet. This is the landscaping slash fencing packet. So the board went out and looked at the site. They knew that you had a concern for buffering and for fencing. When you look at these pictures, you're looking basically at the Wynn property heading to the west, which is where the residence is. They put up a wall fence years ago as part of their approval. The historic board wasn't in love with that fence in terms of its historic value to the main residence on this site. So...
What do you call a frontman? This one on the...
Yes, yep.
What do you call that?
It's a, it's a, actually it's a fence that's constructed of steel.
Okay.
It slides into these posts on each one.
Got it.
And it kind of looks like a garden fence, but it's really not historically correct because it relates to the main...
Is steel or not plastic?
It's not plastic, no. It's steel.
My mistake? You said it was plastic.
No, they got it, they got an inner, it's got some plastic coating on it, but the inside, if you punch it, it's, it's...
You run your carriage.
I'm not going to go try that.
I know, not either. But in any event, on the west side of the back of the property, along the west side, you have that fencing there.
Yes.
On the east side of the property, which is the former Mary Carriola site, on the next page, you see an old...
Picket.
Picket fence, well, stockade fence.
Stockade.
It's not in great shape, but it's not bad enough where you'd want to take it down right away and rebuild it. So the only area remaining was the back portion where the residence relocated that had the swat set.
Right.
And if you note on the next page...
I'm sorry, who owns this?
That's the former Mary Carriola site. That's on the east side of the property.
So they own that fence?
So Mary Carriola owns it?
Well, the owners, no, the owners of the property own that fence.
Oh, but that's not...
It's not Mary Win's fence, no.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Okay. That's what I meant.
So it's there. The last portion is the south side of the property, the rear side of the property, which is wide open. There was a fence there at one time. I think the neighbors took it down. There's a play area and I want you to note also the elevations of where the houses are with respect to this yard. They're lower. I didn't realize that until recently, but they are lower. And in actuality, the second floor is actually where you would look out and see the property. I'm not sure you can see it that well from the first floor.
Sure.
You certainly can from the one to the right of that one that I showed you, but... So the board recognized the fact that you wanted something there. The next page shows, actually the next page shows a break in the properties. It's the property that has the fence, the chain link fences to the east, to the west, and the family that has the playground or playset is to the left side of that picture. You also know there's a shed that's about two feet from that fence that has to be rebuilt.
That's the neighbors', right? That's the neighbor shed?
It's the one behind them, yes. So the board went out and looked at it and the next one shows you that, I'd say not quite a half, but probably close to a third of the property that's fenced, has that black chain link fence. And the board said it's ridiculous to put up a different kind of fence. They would recommend that you continue that black chain link fence just for privacy, I mean, just not to have people passing through.
Yeah.
So that was their recommendation, to continue that fence. Also recognizing that you did want some landscaping. And you go on to the further pictures, I think you seconded the last one.
But this one is Mary Win's fence on her other...
It's not her fence.
It's not?
No, it's the neighbor's fence that lives on the next street over there. It's the back fence.
What did the resolution state?
So the resolution that said that you wanted fencing and, we didn't identify the type of fencing. If you remember, there were several types of fencings that we looked at, but you also wanted landscaping. So we'll talk about the landscaping there.
But my question about the fencing is, so you wanted the fencing, the resolution states that the fencing is a requirement of this...
A fence is a requirement of this board to move forward.
Right.
And I think in your line of reasoning, you were looking at the fence for privacy purposes in addition to, you know, just security purposes.
Right. So my question is, in the event that the Mary Carriola property removes that fence and this neighbor decides to move the black fence, what then happens?
Well, I think when you're looking at the fencing, the fencing is obviously to try and buffer this project from the neighbors. So if you're a neighbor, you think, I want to take that fence down or you probably don't have a concern for buffering anywhere. I can't imagine, first of all, that black fence is not that old. I can't imagine that they'd want to take that down.
So the only fence we need is the one with the playground?
It needs to continue on from the edge of it and you see where the edge is.
What you're saying, historic boards...
The edge starts here and then that fence goes back into the backyard. So this area here goes across to the Mary Carriola property.
So are they suggesting the black fence?
They're suggesting that you continue on the black fence and then they're talking about landscaping to try and actually...
And I have to go back to this plan because I think that'll...
So now we want to go back to the site plan, which is the very first part I gave you. And in that site plan, in that site plan...
Yeah, the last page, the big one.
If you remember, Mary indicated this fence along, this area along here, here they're showing a fence. They haven't identified it yet until you tell them what they want. But they also identify, what's happening is they're taking out material here. They've got to build a small rain garden area by state law. They got to do it. So as a result, what they want to do is they want to take that material and utilize that as a three-foot berm along the back of their property.
Nice.
And I didn't even know that the last time you spoke, but that was always part of the process. So they're going to construct a three-foot berm along the back of the property. She initially was going to plant some type of pine tree on the property. She had access to several pine trees through some previous agreements she had.
I think she had arborvities or something.
No, it wasn't arborvitie, it was pine at one time. And Bruce indicated that he did not like that for a couple reasons. I think it was a deer issue and then also we've been having some real problems with pine trees, as you know, over the last several years on these windstorms. So he recommended a red cedar, western red cedar, which is this. These cedars grow between 30 and 40 feet in height.
All right.
And they do act as kind of a wall.
Wow.
So that's what he recommended. She agreed to it. So now the site plan, and I have a larger copy of the site plan that shows 25 western red cedars be planted along that back property, on that...
Where's the fence?
The fence will be just outside of that area.
Set black line with the X's right there.
The grade will come down towards the fence, but there will still be a flat area between the fence.
It'll take a while for them to grow.
Fence, berm, trees on top of the berm.
Right.
And again, so we're going to recommend, or accepting the historic preservation's recommendation of the continuing the black fence?
The black fence. Because if you put another fence, there'll be four different types of fence in one yard.
So we'll continue on with that black fence, then as Paula said, then the berm and then the trees.
These are intended to be a minimum of four feet with the gate they planted, so between that and three feet from ground level, that should give you a six or seven foot barrier around with that. They're going to be planted...
Whether it's two feet, whether it's two feet or seven feet, from my perspective, the neighbor, the neighbor behind took the fence down. They did that. So this is really more from the property owner, the Wynn property versus from the neighbors, from my perspective.
That's right.
So are we looking to here approve the fence recommendation as well as the landscaping schedule and plan?
As well as your feelings regarding the garage design as well.
Okay.
We can take them, we can take them one at a time. We can hit fence, hit the fence and the landscaping plan in the back. So be the black fence, it would be the 25 trees and the berm.
I support that.
Okay.
So we're...
You want to move separately?
Well, no, I think we'll move together, but I just want to pick, I think we have three items to take a look at.
Okay. So I will join Linda in moving.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, let me just hit the three, the three things to make sure we're on the same.
All right, I was going to do that.
So, okay. Okay, then you go right ahead. Go right ahead there, counselor.
First, regarding the garage, that we would approve with the condition that it would be all white.
Yes.
The garage as indicated in the plan, multi-unit garage, three, six, nine unit garage? Is that how many it is?
It is. It's, there's actually, if you remember, there's 11 units.
Right.
We indicated that the 12th unit will be utilized to store lawn equipment, snow pulling, that type of thing. And that will be the first one in, so all the rest of them will be utilized by the tenants.
And I don't think we have anything else regarding the structure, right? Just the garage?
Yeah.
And then secondly, that we will move for, to adopt the recommendation of the historic preservation board with respect to the fence on the rear line of the property to be a continuation of the same type and material as the existing black fence on the adjacent property.
Okay.
And third, with respect to the landscaping, we will approve the request as indicated in the landscaping schedule and landscaping plan for the construction of a berm to be adorned with western, 25 western red cedar, the trees and the foliage, the elderberry as...
In the front of the garage, you're...
As recommended by landscape architecture. Yeah.
And then I think the only other thing I might suggest that we think about is just to have Bruce Soretsky give it, kind of that final thumbs up with spacing and...
Prior installation, yeah.
I second that motion.
He did recommend a six-foot difference between the plantings.
Right.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded for those, for those items, the garages, the landscaping and then the fence and then out front with the rain garden. Further discussion, questions by the board? Staff?
Yeah, the only thing I want to bring to your attention is that we didn't talk too much about the rain garden. The rain garden does have specific plantings required by the DEC. It's basically grasses, so you're going to see a lot of grasses in that area, but it won't be very deep, I don't believe, Mark. It's just a couple of feet deep.
Yeah, it's an infiltration...
It's basically just to treat the material with the water before it...
So we don't have to include that in the resolution?
No, it's really not the issue at hand. We're kind of locked into that. It's the type of materials that you have to use.
It's fallen under the planning boards, site layout and everything else. It'll be covered by the resolution and then the site plan.
Yeah.
They're that part of it.
And she has also indicated to the board that she's going to do some plantings around the house as well. She's already shown them some kind of a scheme on the west side of the house with the old doorway going up into the area is going to be landscaped.
Nice.
I think they've got it coming. That board is pretty much done with her in terms of the recommendations. That board now is going to write a multi-page resolution identifying each and every of the modifications that were made on the exterior of that building and with respect to what you talked about tonight with the landscaping and the garages. So there will be a comprehensive resolution identifying. And just for the record, these were, these were done, that's not going to go in.
Okay.
And neither is the porch.
So this is not going to go in?
No, and actually that's why she's using the 12th garage, is to utilize it for storage of...
And then this overhang here?
I can't see where I...
Sorry, guys, this...
That one's there. That's always been there. That one's been there. But the one that was originally proposed, she's gotten away from that and she went She's gotten away from that and she went back to the original transom, which I actually have a picture of.
All right.